Good evening. Going to call the Lepore County Council Special Meeting for December 21st to order at 5:01 PM. If everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Honider.
Thank you. Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilwoman Graham Rosas.
Present.
Councilman Garner.
Present.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski. And President Novak.
Present.
Mr. President, I'd like to say if somebody that's on there, if they had their dog muted on that one, whoever it is.
Whoever's got the puppy on Zoom. Terry, is that your dog?
I'm red, Billy.
We thought it was somebody else.
He got a new puppy?
I have no idea.
Terry's dog trying to vote.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Ms. Rodder, do not count the dog's vote, please.
Right. We need approval of tonight's agenda. We have one item.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenhour.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosas. Is there any other questions or comments?
This question, um, this president will notice.
I'm sorry, thank you. I'd like to dispense of the liaison correspondence, department head reports, public comments. The only thing that I think we need is time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to eliminate department head reports and liaison reports.
And correspondence, if there is any.
And correspondence, we don't have any, but. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. I will ask if you're going to speak because there's a BZA meeting at 6 o'clock. So we need to just keep it short, keep it relevant to tonight's agenda. But anybody's free to speak if they would like to. So we'll keep public comment in there, so. Anybody would like to speak. We're going to impose the 30-second rule. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding, just kidding.
We had 15 seconds.
Start it from where you've started.
Yeah. I'll make it quick. Jeff Kuhn, 5111 North Barkley. Over these last few months, I have come in front of you and spoken to you and have spoken to some of you in privately. I have discussed our conditions, our current issues as well. Well, I do understand where you're all coming from when it comes to, when it comes from wants and needs and how we're going to pay for it all. It's not as easy as some may think. Last week, many things were discussed. What brings us here tonight is the subject of bonuses. While some may say we need to receive nothing, we should just be thankful we have a job. Others have said they wanted us to give us more than what was offered, and others have said, let's make it equal. We can debate who's essential and who is not, but we are all governmental employees, so we're all essential. Now, in regards to pay, we are separate and not equal. Starting March of next year, we will have been two years into the pandemic, and by then, hopefully, with an end in sight. But a Christmas miracle may not come. ARP funds are a one-time fund. And being at these meetings, we have heard many uses and needs for this money. One might say we wish we could get more, but I think that ship has sailed. While this money could only be used for certain things, one thing it could be is bonus pay. What bonus? We have endured changes in our way of life, risked at times not only ourselves, but our families as well. All departments of county government were affected. While many departments within the county and within the business community began to keep workers at home, the term essential became redefined. The only problem with that is that the working community it depended on was already at a breaking point. At the county level, work changed in so many ways. Departments that were barely needed or talked about were now front and center, like the Health Department, EMA, IT. Other departments that normally are front and center still work 24/7 and saw changes too. The unknown was upon us all. As a collective body of politicians, department heads, and employees, we address needs and develop plans. Departments were stressed, yet services still need to be given. Now, almost two years later, we are seeing the effects of years of neglect when it comes to wages, not always by choice, and for most of you, not your doing either. COVID has made many people look at their jobs and what they do and value what they're doing, along with how they are compensated, something a wage study will be interesting to see in the coming years. So as we continue to fight for wages that are sustainable, we hope that all that we have said and done does not go unanswered. These last two years has been ever-changing on many levels, and many departments are struggling more today than in the beginning. So as you reconsider the bonuses, please think about the employees that came to work these last two years and the new employees that came as well. Show the employees your appreciation, just not over the next two years. A few months back, I brought up, I brought this up in our monthly management meeting, awareness and arrogance. We are all guilty of arrogance. It's easy to do, but what we always don't do is have the awareness. So please, think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, it's my first time addressing you, so.
State your, state your name.
My name is Lynn Brohl. I am the supervisor of the Counseling and Reception Center at the Juvenile Center. Okay, so, um, I've been coming to these meetings on Zoom and in person for the last couple of months, and some of the things that I was listening to was that if we got a lump sum of the $4,000, that some of you were afraid we were going to quit. But as of right now, and I can only speak for the Juvenile Center, we have had a huge turnover, and a lot of them have been veterans and seasoned employees. And when you decided to give us, I think about $75 on our paycheck for the next two years, that we did, that kind of threw us, because we didn't hear any of that brought up through the meetings. We were looking at maybe, you know, $2,000 here and $2,000 there. But it's not that we would leave with a bonus. That's a show of thank you so much for working through this COVID, and we really appreciate you. And let's face it, we're what, in the red right now, and things are looking really, this is the first time nobody could hear me. You get told I got a big mouth.
You're doing, you're doing a great job.
Um, but you know, with some school systems in another county are not going to open up after Christmas, so we're getting to be really, you know, in the red again. So the show of appreciation for everybody, I can say, in the county that works here to give us the bonus for Christmas would just, even in the, before the first of the year, that was what we were looking for, to make our lives a little better, to pay off some bills, to help us give our family a great Christmas, and we can say, you know what, we were appreciated through this. After the two years, you know, I'm looking at this going, okay, it's $75 for two years, so you get used to that on your paycheck. What happens after that? Then we go back down to wherever we were before. So my, my, my opinion, and that's only my opinion, is that a bonus is not going to make us quit. Us, I'm here 16 going on 17 years. That's going to be just awesome for me to get a bonus like that, and I can sure, everybody here could agree, that we would be just so happy, even if it's at the first of the year to get the lump sum, because talking to other counties and other states and cities, that's what they got. They got a lump sum, and they said, here, thank you. I'm just a little confused because the, I was on Zoom last week, and it was so much going on, and at the end, I thought I heard that we were just, we were getting $75 on our, every paycheck, and I'm like, wow, that wasn't even brought up. If, if that was brought, I didn't remember seeing that in the last couple of months. You know, I heard $1,000, you know, a bonus here in this month and all that, but not for two years. So I would, I would appreciate a reconsideration for all of us here that has worked through the COVID and still.
That's why we're here. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
How you doing? Tony Cox, Long Beach.
You gotta, you gotta say it when you're closer to the mic.
Tony Cox, Long Beach, Indiana.
Okay.
I don't have a dog in the fight to speak of. I do know a lot of these wonderful people who work for the Juvenile Service Center, and I do know that there's not one of them that's going to take the $2,000 and run away and buy their own alley.
Anybody else from the public?
Yep.
This is the, uh. You want to contest? Christmas sweater contest.
You win.
We're voting for it right now. All in favor?
I'll be here all week with a different one. First, I wanted to start out by saying that.
State your name, just so everybody.
Sorry, Commissioner Joe Haney, Lepore County Commissioner. I'm sorry for, first of all, I want to start out by saying that I'm sorry for the dressing down that the Commissioners Marzinski and Mathias and Attorney Friedman have been engaged in, you know, over the past week or three. You know, it's okay for us to have our own opinions on how we feel about certain things, but trying to, you know, trying to play politics with our employees, you know, at the expense of the council is far from okay, in my opinion. So, you know, I really value the working relationship I have with each of you up here. You know, it's been, no matter what it is, if there's a question, no matter what it is, I can reach out to each and every one of you for whatever it is, and we seem to get things done. We have great meetings together, you know, whether it's Councilman Yagowski or Councilman Mullenhour on the Insurance Board, you know, we, you know, FMEC and all the other Plan Commission, all the different things that we're on together. So I just wanted to express that. While I have obviously attended, I think, pretty much all the council meetings this year and the special meetings, and I didn't say anything at the last special meeting, and probably I was amiss for not doing that, but I had spoken at previous meetings, and I think I've spoken one-on-one with most of you here about some of these issues. I, and I have obviously been very vocal during the Commissioner meetings about how I feel, and when it came time for us to do a recommendation to send to you for bonus pay or retention pay, you know, however the consideration was going to be. One of the concerns that I had during the meeting, and then I tried to get put into the motion, was to be able to give the council both the leeway and latitude to do what you need to do, as well as some possible direction in sending it over. Unfortunately, I was outvoted, and what got sent over got sent over. But I think that would have went a long way to, to, to hopefully, you know, possibly mitigating some of this. I also wanted to address some confusion over frontline workers that has, that that term has been bantered about a little bit more recently here from the Commission. As far as I'm concerned, you know, over this past year, you know, if you're a full-time worker, you came to work, you know, regardless of where it was, you know, the Sheriff's Office, EMS, you know, the Clerk's Office, you know, interfacing, getting job done every day, if you came to work and you showed up here, you were on the frontline. I don't, for the purposes of this bonus, I don't think there should be any distinction for that, and I, I know there's some confusion from that. I know, for example, there's, I saw on social media, somebody say, well, county highway folks just sit in a, you know, sit behind a wheel and a truck all by themselves, and county highway does a lot more than that. I'm just using this as one example, but they do a lot more than that, and one of the folks out there who contracted COVID was traced back to, you know, a job-related exposure. So that, that's just one way that if you're not familiar, you know, for the public at least, if they're not familiar with the work that people do here in the county every day, you know, some things get lost in, you know, behind the thing when you just think about somebody behind the wheel of a snow truck, let's say, for example. I want to wrap up with a possible solution here. I know, I think you'll have the difference, obviously, to do whatever you'd like. Speaking with several of you, a possible middle ground may be a lump sum on the last check of this year, and then taking the remainder of that and dividing it out over the next couple of pay periods, you know, what I would think would be a maximum of 26 pay periods over the next year, to be able to make sure there, there's something upfront, a thank you, and then for those who want to see some of that retention, to try and balance those two opinions, to be able to get that wrapped up within, you know, the next 12 months and one week, as opposed to anything longer than that. So thank you so much for, for holding this meeting tonight. We appreciate it, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas.
And a huge thank you to our workers who, because without, without our Lepore County employees, every single one of them, we couldn't do what we do here in the county would function.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike, apparently you didn't get the sweater memo about the competition today.
About what?
The Christmas sweater competition.
I had a really good one last Friday, but you know, I decided to show my support for my people today, sir. Michael Callahan, Assistant Director, Lepore County Juvenile Services Center. I'd like to echo, what? Sir, I can't remember your name from you. No, I, I know you. What, what is your name?
Yeah.
For what Jeff Kuhn said and what all my people have said, and I would like to echo what Walter said. Tony, we call him Walter in the building. You know, and we appreciate that you're being here for the reconsideration for tonight, but these people come in every day regardless, and some of them come in sick and we send them home, honestly, but they're that dedicated. They want to be here. They're not going to leave. I'm not going to leave. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Can't force her. Public comment is now closed. Move on to ordinances and resolutions.
Wait, wait, wait!
What, what?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, my name is Sergeant Anthony Edward Lewis, United States Army Infantry Retired. I am a citizen, uh, other than Michigan City. Um, I'm also a progressive political activist. I wanted to, I rise on this occasion to request that the committee seriously consider, I'm trying to remember the language, um, lump sum, retention pay, pandemic pay to county employees. I sincerely hope that in the subject line of these checks, that you'll be able to use these three words, mercy, compassion, and grace. I want the committee to own it. This opportunity is rare, be able to demonstrate that you recognize, appreciate, oh, there's a personal virtue, compassion, mercy, and grace. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. I see another hand up. Was that his hand?
No, that is Anthony Lewis.
Is there any other, anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed. Ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. President, that would, this would have to be contingent and be put out later on, on the agenda if something should happen with 2021.
So we'll hold off on that?
Correct.
So move on to new employee, a new business, employees' bonus ARP 8950 and 8951.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mullenhour.
I move to rescind the employee bonus adopted at the last meeting, our special meeting on December 13th, 2021.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I'd like to also rescind my second on that, please.
So we have a motion and a second to rescind the previous bonuses at our last meeting.
As explained, we were the people that motioned.
Right. All those in favor, say aye.
What question? I'm sorry, point of, point of, what are question? Are the people who voted for it, are those the only people eligible to vote? I want to make sure that.
Everybody is eligible to vote.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion.
So would I. I, I thought I, I thought I signaled in first.
I think I raised my hand first, like that.
If you would like to go, please go.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that the bonuses for our present full-time employees be $2,000 payable December 30th, our next pay period, 2021, and a lump sum, the whole $2,000, and immediately, immediately, and the other second $2,000 bonus on December, the last pay period in December of 2022, on that being a total of $4,000. And prorate, I know we do have the bridge tenders, which are limited with monthly, uh, nine months. Nine months out of the year, prorate the bridge tenders.
I second that, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second on the question.
For the record, we have a cost of that of 2.95, 2.95 million approximately.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Miss Staples.
So were the bridge tenders included the last time?
Yes.
They're included, they're included all the time. They only get paid for the months that they work though. They don't get paid all year.
They're full-time employees for nine months of the year. That's what, that's, they've been under contract for this for as long as it's been around. They, they get laid off for three months every year.
Okay.
They're not going to get the benefit of the three months during the year. They get insurance and everything else, too.
Any other questions or comments?
Just that the calculation is 625 approximately, times the 4,000 is 2.5 million, plus there's another 443, 450,000 in Medicare perf.
Okay, thank you. Any none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Aye.
You got to ask for me to do it.
Call it, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilwoman Graham Rosas.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
And Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes.
Motion fails. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make a motion where we pay bonuses to all full-time employees, including the prorated bridge tenders, $1,000 immediately at the very next pay period, $1,000 June 22, $1,000 December 22, $1,000 June 23. The money that, under federal rules that are considered essential, the money be pulled from the ARP fund, and those that are not considered essential rule be pulled from the lost revenue account.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosas. Is there any questions?
Just ask for roll call, sir.
Any question? I'm asking for a question.
No, no. I have a question. That's where you go, just asking for roll call.
I have a comment. Oh, you're asking for a roll.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mullenhour.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Just that with that motion, one thing, well, I'm not agreeable with any of it, but one thing I see a big problem with is, or not a big problem, but I think it would be much clearer and cleaner to have it all of, be the way, well, my motion is what I think is going to be.
Your motion failed.
Would be the best, but, but the motion is to pay a, one sum, $1,000 in 2023, we'll have a new council at that time, or possibly several new members. So I think it would just be cleaned up if, if it wasn't taken that far. So that's my comment.
Can I, can I make, just make a comment? I would, I would ask the, um, Mike who made the motion, Mr. Rosenbaum, if he would consider $2,000 upfront, then $1,000 in June, and $1,000 in December next year, so that it's all in that calendar year, gives the employees more upfront, and it still accomplishes the same thing, so.
Motion on the floor.
Is that, you're not going to respond?
I'm, I'm trying to see if we have enough votes that it would go that way, so that we're not sitting here all night doing.
Give it a shot. Let's see if it does.
I'm not. Okay. I have a comment as well.
Mr. Cunningham.
I would just like to make this comment, because the comment came from the floor, from Lynn, and oftentimes I think that you come to these meetings and you don't think that what you say to Mike has an influence. And this is something that I really feel strongly about, is that had we stayed with the previous plan, we'll give you $77 every two weeks for the next two years, then it was going to basically appear two years from now that you got to pay cut, because that $77 was going to fall off your check. That point that you made, I think is the most logical reason and probably the only reason that seven of us agreed to be here tonight.
That it?
I'm sticking with the motion as of me. If it fails, we're going to have to come back to something else.
It fails, but if you've, you got the vote, you got the vote. I just think it's right to give them $2,000 upfront.
We already, we already voted on that.
And I, Mr. Rosenbaum, I gave you a chance to talk. I'm going to talk.
I appreciate that.
So I'm just giving you my opinion, so.
Thank you very much.
So he's not, he's not changing, it's, he's not changing.
There's just one thing that I would bring up, just for your, I don't know if there would be a statutory prohibition, but if you're going to encumber 2023, and it's not really in a salary ordinance yet, I don't know, I just don't know what the future council would do with that. So if you make that now, I can comment as to what the new body coming in in January 2023, if Mr. Yagowski can comment, that's, that's fine, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Yagowski.
As far as I know, the way the long, believe me, I didn't, no disrespect to Mr. Haney, but first of all, I don't understand why they took this, the Commissioners, State of Indiana took the Commissioners in the first place, since this is a budgetary monetary thing. So since they did, the, as far as I've read, bonuses are not considered our salaries. So we are allowed to, we are allowed to go out, and I think even Mr. Cunningham, through his research, we can actually go out to 2024.
Six.
26. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing with how you're looking at it, but how I read, the way the State of Indiana shoved this down our throats, uh, this is not a salary ordinance, this is a bonus plan that we're allowed to.
And it's specifically from ARP funds, which can be expended all the way to December of 26.
To those accounts of budgetary process.
But wouldn't it be similar to what we did with the volunteer firemen, to where?
We've extended it.
But we also said we could not guarantee it past the future councils.
Because we don't know what future guidance is going to be. That's the only thing that I'm saying.
But I just mentioned, you said salary or, I'm not disagreeing with you, but it's not a salary ordinance, it's, it's a, and I disagree with that. They, they, they by state statute, they made their own law, they bypassed us, they, they said that this is a budgetary stuff where you just, I mean, it's not a budgetary process, it's a bonus, and you guys use it as you see fit. And they gave us the 13 categories or what they were supposed to do, and then we are not allowed to do anything more than the Commissioners would come up with the list. For example, they came up with $4,000, i.e. example, how they did that.
But they only did it for $4,000, if I may, and only for what they considered essential employee.
I don't disagree, but that's.
I, I'm not the attorney, but you just voted to rescind a bonus. So the question is, can a future council vote to rescind, the new council, newly elected, vote to rescind the 2023 portion of that bonus, is what the attorney is.
No, but the attorney said salary ordinance, I'm just mentioning the fact that this is not a salary.
I, I didn't, yeah, I might have misspoke as to, but, but just so you know, Mr. Yagowski, the, the financial advisor for the Commission, did reach out to me and say that if we are, if you are going to expend monies for 2021, he recommended amending the salary ordinance.
I just.
So I.
Is that, is that by Mr. Freeman?
By Mr. Sender.
Mr. Sender?
Yes, so I, so I haven't taken a deep, deep dive into the ARP issues, but I'm just saying that that's out there, and 2023 is, is a long way away.
I, I would make a suggestion there that should, and I think Mr. Yagowski would agree, that should we elect a new council who's not comfortable with going out to that last check, then we could just pay the two of them in December. I mean, we wouldn't have to go into that following year. If the money is already committed, we could avoid going into the year with another motion.
But we're not. How are you going to, how are you going to do that, Mr. Cunningham? You're going to ask a council that's just been elect, the council that gets elected to take a straw vote of them, of what they're going to do in January 2023? I, I just don't know the mechanism of that would work.
No, I would wait until that council's seated, and if there's deep feeling of the new council that we shouldn't go out that far, we could always consolidate the last two payments. Correct?
You mean before the council took over?
Yeah, I don't, because the council will be voted, the, the new council members will be voted in in November, and they won't take the dais until January, and that's January 2023. So, so if they're not in favor of it, I just don't know how that January of 2023 payment will be manifested.
It is actually June.
June of 2023?
So in reality, then, with the new council, they could say, move that up to January of '23. It would be effectively.
Or they could say.
Or they could say, not, we're not going to pay it.
Correct.
If the majority of the new council says that.
Right, so I mean, that's, you know, that's a risk, and I'm just, I just want you all to be advised.
Mr. Yagowski.
So I will take this lead off of Mr. Rosenbaum. All of a sudden, we, we hire, and people ask this question, we had, we hired this individual, Mr. Sender, and then we didn't. Now it's, now we hired Baker Tilly. So I don't understand where our advice is coming from. And this is, again, this is a confusion that we've had all year long. So congratulations, Council, you, you know, this is what we, this is how we have to deal with the, with what gets passed on to us. Mr., I'm just referring to your comment.
Well, I, I guess that could be on me, because I don't know who is actually supposed to reach out to Baker and Tilly, whether it's supposed to be the, the council or not, so I, I'm sort of confused as to that.
This is, this is no reference to you, this is under, under contracts. The contracts are on the Commission, and I have nothing to do, I'm not, this has nothing to do with you.
But I'm just telling you what, what I was informed of.
I don't disagree, but I'm, what I'm disagreeing with is the contracts and how they're put, put to the council. They were, we were told that they were no, that one's not doing it, now it's Baker Tilly, and now it's been thrown back to this. If anybody else did not hear this conversation throughout the year, please tell me I'm wrong.
No, it shouldn't be Baker Tilly. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments? My final comment is, I would, I would ask that is a compromise. My final comment is, I would, I would ask that, is a compromise between the two, I would ask for 2,000 this year, 1,000 twice next year, but if, if not, call the roll.
No, repeat the motion, so we know, has that been changed, right?
No.
That is changing.
Council, excuse me, Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Garner. Sorry.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Grandma Rosa.
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Is there any other? Hey. Going to keep order here, so.
They're grateful. If you'd like to have conversation, I will stay and have all conversation.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Sorry. You're absolutely correct.
Orderly. Is there any old business? Council comments?
So let me, so let me ask you this. I'm of the belief.
Let's quiet down.
Let's hold it down.
They're getting $4,000, they're, they're upset.
Mr. Auditor. Oh, Mr. Guy.
Revised it, it wouldn't have been.
So back to my point.
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you.
Recession.
Wait a second.
Stop the.
Ask the security, get them out of here.
Kevin. Stop the camera. Take a recess. All right, we're back. Mr. Attorney Di Martino.
So since you all are giving $1,000 this year, are we going to amend the salary ordinance? Is Mr. Sender on by any chance? Is he on Zoom?
This is, this is a bonus. Do we need to amend the salary ordinance? Is it something, is it something that if we find that we need to do, we can do first of the year?
Let's do it, let's do that, I mean.
As a point, that way you get a chance to look.
Listen, I'm all about asking for forgiveness and permission, so let's do it, we'll do it in January.
Mr. Novak, Mr. Sender is on, is on Zoom, if you want to speak with him?
Yeah, yeah, that.
Commissioner Mathias.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Sender, can you comment as to what Mr. Yagowski brought up, these being ARP funds, whether they need to go, whether we need to amend the salary ordinance? Please speak up, can't hear you.
Mr. Sender, are you on?
Hold on.
There he is.
There you are. We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's my opinion that you would need to amend the salary ordinance according to the State Board of Accounts. Any compensation paid to county employees needs to be covered by the salary ordinance. And I believe the council's attorney has prepared an amended salary ordinance that you can consider at your pleasure, aye.
Mr. President, motion to open up the salary, the, the budgetary process for 2022.
2021.
2021. We're doing it in 2021.
Oh, you're okay. 2021, which I totally, okay, but 2021.
Let's just go with it.
2021.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Second, second by Mr. Rosenbaum.
So because information has changed, I'm, I guess I will read the salary ordinance in, if that, the amendment, if that's okay? Amendment to ordinance number 2021-02, an ordinance adopting County of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies. Be it ordained by the LaPorte County Council that the 2021 salary ordinance adopted on January 22, 2021, is amended as follows. The former paragraph K is amended to the following. If employed on December 31, 2021, full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus for the year 2021. Is that correct? Is that the motion?
Whoa, 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 I didn't hear a proration before.
I, I didn't say anything about proration.
Only for the bridge.
Okay, so as to that.
What's the proration for?
Well, I get a real simple question. We hire somebody next week, we're going to give them the bonus? That's what, that's what that just said.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, that, that's the first sentence.
Thank you.
Okay. The bonus is to be prorated by the number of months employed in the year 2021.
Thank you, I agree.
That was part of the motion?
That was part of the original motion.
But that, that motion was rescinded, so that's where, so we. Okay, so.
It's not part of the motion.
That part was not part of the motion.
Right.
Okay, so as it reads right now, if employed on December 31, 2021, the full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus for the year 2021. Is that, does that capture what you all just voted? Okay.
I would say, to say you have to put today's date on it.
Have to put today's date?
Today's date.
Okay. If, so then K will read, if employed on December 21, 2021, full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus for the year 2021.
I don't think that's the intention of the council.
Well, then, I think somebody needs to go ahead, if that's not the intention of the council, you're still here, somebody can do a motion for reconsideration, and you can go ahead and, and start, and, and do a motion for consideration, but you will need a majority of vote in order to do so.
Can't we just have a motion to add the proration line?
Well, you can have, you can have an emotion, you can have a motion for reconsideration or a motion to amend, and so then you would, you would state what the initial motion was, and then you would state the amended motion.
So, so just out of curiosity, so then when you pay out in June, if somebody gets hired in March, you're going to prorate that one, you're going to prorate the next one, and the next one? That wasn't mentioned, but go ahead. Mr. Yagowski.
I'm just trying to work through this.
I agree.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney.
He didn't mention.
Today.
He did not mention it in motion.
You are correct. It was mentioned at our last meeting.
But that, but that.
In favor of proration.
But that motion was rescinded.
I understand.
And I, and I just want to clarify, everybody wasn't in favor of proration because we talked about prorating the initial $2,000, and it was, Mike was against proration. Mike brought up that everything needed, well, he brought up everything needed to be prorated.
It was, it was a different person who said that we should do it at six months.
Right.
It was, it was a different member that said that we should do it at six months, at least at six months.
I just want to make sure we get it right.
No, but you're absolutely correct. We, we need to address this, and then looking for guidance from people, it would be great to feel how, how you would want to handle the six months.
Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm sorry, it does, I can't remember the date that we gave, we asked for the original money that we gave to the employees who were employed during the COVID. Does anybody remember?
January, February?
That was in September.
Last December, we talking about the, the one that was prorated by the hours?
It was.
That were good.
It was prorated, no, it was prorated by the people that worked, and then.
Actually came to work.
Yes.
As opposed to being home. That was la, last December, that was last year.
Payable wins.
I think it, I don't know if it, I, I think it made the last payroll or the first payroll in January, because I remember Ms. Winzki pulling her hair out of her head.
So, okay, I don't disagree with that, I'm sorry, this exact date, but okay, I'll accept that. So my question will be, I remember the motion came up there, not a person questioned why we didn't open the 2020 budget that day.
I did, I, I did amend the salary.
We did, we did, that's what I'm asking, so we, so we opened up, we reopened the 2020 up that day and did it, or I'm, I'm asked, how do we do it?
We amended the salary ordinance. I have the amendment.
Okay, I just didn't know how we could do it without opening up that, okay, I did, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't recall that, I'm sorry.
No, that's fair enough.
So let's get a clarification on the thousand, 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 so it's going to require a motion.
Well, you'd have two ways to, to do the motion, do a motion to reconsider or a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
And then state the prior mo, state the prior motion and then how you wish to amend it.
I'll ask Mr. Rosenbaum to read the prior motion. The prior motion was to pay $1,000 immediately at the next pay period in December. $1,000 to be paid in June 2022. $1,000 to be paid in December 2022, and $1,000 be paid in June 2023. It was also mentioned that we would prorate bridge tenders, and that those eligible under the federal rules for ARP, that the funds be taken from the ARP fund, and those not eligible from the ARP would be taken from the lost revenues.
Is there any other questions or comment? Was there a second on the motion to amend?
I just read it, so it's time for somebody else.
Is that, that your second?
That was my motion to amend, or if you consider it the second. I made motion to amend. All right, then I'll consider it the second.
So that or vice versa?
And then we now to add, need to add the correction?
No. We got to have a motion to amend first.
The motion to amend is.
No, the motion to amend, the way that it should be stated, is that you prop, you state the prior motion, and then you say, I want to amend it to what it is, and then they, then the vote comes up on the amendment, it's seconded, there's discussion, and it can pass or fail. See, I really studied this because I knew that this is going to be an issue, I have the Bible here.
So are you asking me to just read his motion again before I make the amendment?
Yes. Or Michael can read it.
I just read it. Can we take that?
How are you going to amend it?
How are you going to amend it now? We need to do this quickly, there's another meeting that's going to start, so I, I don't need to.
To prorate by months. If that's how we had it in the last, then that's the way it'll be.
So it's the same, same motion, and you, your, the amendment is to add, it's going to be prorated by.
The number of months employed during the 2021, the number of months in the six-month period ending June 22, the, in the six-month period ending December 22, and then the 1,000, in the six-month period, June 2023.
Is that, is that rounded up or rounded down, or what's the, is that rounded to the nearest month, or is that days divided?
Nearest month. Nearest whole month.
So if.
So if somebody starts on the 28th of February, it starts on March 1st. So it'd only be four months. Is that clear? So the, the 15th would be the cutoff period.
Oh.
If you're going to go for whole, and no, I said whole months, that means it has to be whole months.
Whole, whole months, okay.
Doesn't matter when they start in the first month.
Any others, are we?
So that's the, that's the motion to amend, Earl seconded it.
Right.
Discussion.
Any other discussion? I got it from here. I got it from here.
Sorry, okay, Randy, I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
I studied, man.
Any other questions? I know, I know. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Auditor, please, is there, do you have a question? Because you're the one that answered, administer.
Vaughn, do you want to ask, sorry, he was asking me, and I don't know if I'm asking publicly or not.
Ask the question.
If you have an individual who's only been here three months, you're in that timeframe, you're saying $1,000 divided by three months, it's 333.3.
No.
$500, you're saying 500 or $1,000?
If it's the year for calendar 21, and it's the 12 months, every other six-month period's over six months, the ratio is over six months. So if somebody was here for three months, we'll get 500 of it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? I want, just want to make sure everybody understands it, so, all right. Mr. Clerk, I mean.
It's $500 for three months, right? It's 1,000 for six months, right?
Yes.
Mr. Auditor, please call the roll.
Going to randomly choose one of these? Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
Councilwoman Grandma Rosa.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Garner.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Four ayes, three nays.
All right, so now amending the salary ordinance, we have, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we had a motion by Mr. Yagowski and seconded by.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Mr. Rosenbaum. To amend the salary ordinance.
Amendment to the ordinance number 2021-2, an ordinance adopting County of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies. Be it ordained by the LaPorte County Council that the 2021 salary ordinance adopted on January 22, 2021, is amended as follows. The former paragraph K is amended to the following. K, if employed on December 21, 2021, full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus for the year 2021. The bonus is to be prorated by the number of months employed in the year 2021. Does that?
Is it relevant for 2021, or is it irrelevant?
No, it is relevant.
Oh, it's still relevant, okay.
Right, because if somebody started working last month. Okay. Former paragraph K is renamed to paragraph L and reads as follows. The following job classification and compensation maintenance system is hereby adopted.
Are you good?
That's the amendment.
All right. We have a motion, a second, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we need to call the roll on this? And let's do it anyway, what the heck. Call it.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Nay.
Councilman Cunningham.